Item one. Public hearing on local law of one will not happen tonight. Had a little mix-up and the advertiser didn't get out, that'll be at next meeting. Item two, bid results of contract 2009-01, paving in various streets or locations throughout the village. Who's going first, Carol or Brian?
The bids were opened by the clerk, deputy clerk, and the public clerk supervisor, and there was two representatives present from Fuller and Pike Industries. They were opened on Friday, February 27th. The first one was from Plattsburgh Paving Company with a total amount of $128,400. Noel, Jay Brunell and son. Do you want just the totals or do you want...
Yeah, just the totals.
Okay. Their total was $167,930. Carter's Black Topping Incorporated was $136,750. Pike Industries was $154,245. And Stephen Fuller was $215,411. That's all the bids were up there.
Do I have a recommendation, Brian?
My recommendation is, on all the bids that we opened up, they're subject to price escalation, so it's not a firm price. So I would recommend that we discard all these bids and do the blacktopping ourselves.
What exactly does that mean, Brian?
Price escalation, it depends how much they're paying for a barrel oil at the time.
Is that written right into their bid? Is that...
Yes, it's written right into their bid. When they tell you $128,000, it's subject to price escalation.
That turns out today.
Right. We need to be, for a budget item, there has to be a firm price.
Yep, okay.
I mean, how do we do a budget if we don't have a firm price? So...
Okay.
I don't know how the board feels about it, but...
You can have the county do it then.
Yeah, we're talking to the county, Al Rasco, and with the shared services, we would buy the material and they would come and work with us to put it down.
So we'll get more paving for less money, basically, is what it'll work out to?
Yes.
We're hoping.
We're hoping.
We should be able to get in with their, we all bid in together, so...
Well, yeah, with the county, Al Rasco told me that the county doesn't have a lot of blacktopping this year, so you're gonna have time. I know that the town of Champlain has, they wanna do the golf course road and these other roads that they're gonna do, so we're gonna work all together. With their trucks, our trucks are manpower, and we're gonna get it all done in time.
Golf course road, they probably won't do till the end of the season, but they still have some pitching to do up there.
I don't think that's gonna hold them off, because all their culverts are in, and that's why Allen pushed to get the culvert too.
All right. But I talked to Whit, I thought they wanted to widen that road. No, no, we talked to them about it, but, you know, it would be to our advantage if it was towards the end of the season.
Yes, that's fine. I mean, Al Rasco said he'd be up with his blacktop foreman in April to take a look at where our roads are. He already looked at our plans, our footages, and he said it wouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
That's good. Good idea.
I need a motion to...
I'll make a motion to disallow all the bids that were submitted.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Open the meeting from comments in the public this time. Anybody who wishes to address the board may do so. All right, if nobody wishes to address at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of February 17th. Board, you all have copy. Is there any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of February 17th.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burns. Any discussion? Those opposed, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bill, we all have copies of the bills, is there any additions?
No, there is not, no deletions either.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion?
Parkson, why are there so many zeros on page five?
I think it's because we're just putting down the description of the item being purchased, but it looks like the only thing we're being charged for mostly is three plus.
Is what?
I'm not really sure, to be honest with you. Why it came out like that?
I sent...
They submitted invoices that were zero because of quotes. Well, they're all saying, no, the invoice numbers are all same. Or did the computer call?
There are several that are repeated, and then it changes, and then it goes back to the one repeated again. I don't know, I just was curious. I haven't seen who that came for.
I checked all the bills today and I didn't see any zero.
Well, I just wondered if it throws anything off, I don't know.
Wait in the back, Artson.
Oh, I think it has something to do with our purchase order system. I think this is a partial payment, and some stuff are still on the border, or we've already received and paid for some of the others. This is a very detailed purchase order.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
The first item I have is a notice from Sandy's Deli Incorporated for renewal application notice form regarding your liquor license, and it was sent by certified mail, and that's just a notice to report. The next item I have is from New York State DEC. It's regarding wastewater panels for local elected officials. It's a basic session. The overall success or failure of the wastewater treatment systems in New York State rests largely with local officials and non-technical staff, and this panel informs local representatives about their administrative, financial, and associated responsibilities relative to wastewater treatment plants and collection and systems. And there's gonna be a training, a basic session held on Thursday, March 26th, at the Thatcher House SUNY Pod Stand, and just the mayor is asking to put it on to see if anybody was interested possibly in attending.
You show this to Tommy? Wastewater panel?
No, I don't think I did. I think I... I can, if you wanna approve one, go, and then if he's interested, he can.
Is it for...
It's more for, it's more for the elected officials.
Yep.
Anybody interested in going? Breathe! Don't happen too often. Even if you want in dinner?
I'd go, I'd move him down.
Okay.
No one's gonna be attending?
No one's attending.
And that's all I have for correspondence.
Thank you, Carol. Okay. Report of the board, or the mayor and the board of trustees. First thing on my agenda is an announcement of the intermediate ICS one, the I-300 course. It's from 29th to May 1st, and this course is mandatory that all village officials and employees take it in order to be entitled for grants in the state of New York. This is, it's the emergency management. Federal government has dictated that we will operate under the incident command course, and that's what it is.
All of those workers gotta attend it?
Yep, most of them have.
Yeah, three years ago...
Three years ago, we had it right here. Maybe there's some new employees. Brian, you wanna check with your people in Sioux Falls? They had to have the ICS 100, 200, and 700s to be reckless in. Now, I don't know if they all have that, and I know we gave two or three of those courses here, but we should, they should all have certificates for it.
There was two of them that took it and didn't get a certificate.
Were you sure you were there, gentlemen?
Didn't you be there?
Then I will check into it. Tomorrow morning, first thing. I would love to give Mr. Dadiou a call about that.
We should be able to get an updated list from him, for the whole village, employees?
Sure. Yeah, I will try to get that.
Please?
Okay. Discussion on extending one-year moratorium on downtown storefronts in C-1 zone areas. Yeah, the moratorium has expired on that, that's for, I mean, you did not want the storefronts to be turned into apartments, but I believe the orphan building has been done into apartments, not apartments, by living quarters. Will be part of the upstairs, upstairs and downstairs living all in one.
So it'd be a house?
Houses.
And that's, that's the reason for Mike's email? It's, it's, and what happens? That is allowed because it happened during the period when the moratorium expired?
No. Michael checked in, and because, I believe it was because of the fact that it's an actual home. It's not an apartment.
But that space was commercial. But the space in front of the building was commercial?
It was offices.
Yes, it was, and it should stay commercial. If, if it's not happening because the moratorium has passed, then it shouldn't be happening, because then you completely limit the use of that building in the downtown. And if you look at, since we established the moratorium, the number of places in the downtown that have become viable storefronts again, it's exactly what we wanted when we passed that plan.
But I'm not sure Michael was, he came in and looked at it, and he looked at the lot, and he didn't touch base with him to see if that...
I know, I've reminded Michael several times about that. So they're doing something in there that shouldn't be. I saw them moving in, you know...
Do they have a building permit?
Oh, yeah.
For...
Well, that, I don't know, I didn't even see the belly from it, and I just know that they, 'cause I asked Mike, I said, "How'd they got a belly from there?" And I looked in there, and they were moving in, you know, two-by-fours, two-by-sixes and stuff, and then I saw showers going in, and I said, "Wait a minute, let's go on." I said, "Mike, are they putting apartments or something in there?" He said, "No, no, it's all, everything's okay." That's all I can tell you.
I think we need to have a conversation with Mike Pedro about it, because that goes against everything that we have been trying to do in our downtown, and what, as we have people, like the agency, like the coffee shop, like the new gold shop going in, like the secondhand shop, and we have people who are investing in our downtown, we can't just haphazardly make a decision to change that policy just because someone issued them a building permit. It's not fair to the rest of the people who invest money to fix up their building in the downtown on a promise of the downtown plan that we passed. I think we have a real problem.
Was there, did you get the email from Mike about square footage or...
Well, which I didn't understand until just now, and now I understand why he wrote this, because he's granted them a building permit to do it. That's his concern, he never had the concern before.
Do we wanna extend the moratorium, or can we extend it?
I think we absolutely want to extend it, and I think we really need to investigate what's going on in that one particular property. Because otherwise, what prevents someone from putting a decoration in the window front and establishing a downstairs residence, which is what down, part of what we don't want, and what, everything we've read and everything that we've looked at in the last four years since we passed that plan, that's what cripples downtowns. So I would suggest, I mean, I'll make a motion that we draft the renewal of the moratorium on the first floor residences in the C-1 district, but I also think that we should have a conversation with code enforcement officer about exactly what the plan is for that building.
I agree. I, 'cause I didn't know what was going on, I asked him several times. Did we really get a straight answer?
Yeah, and the original moratorium, they didn't mention square footage for...
No. The only reason this has come up now, I believe, is because of that one property, it sounds like at least. I mean, I, I have no idea what's going into that property, but based on what you've described, now this makes sense to me.
Is that what it says?
Well, I'd, I'd saw the other day, contractor was outside, and I said, "Well, you know what, inside there?" "Oh, he said we're making a corruptus room downstairs, you know, big large screen TV going in and stuff downstairs." "Oh, I didn't comment any other way." I just got phoned out, and, and I saw them move in two brand-new showers. I don't know if they went downstairs for what.
Do you know for a fact that the whole thing that we're renting is in the hot, some area?
Not only going by what George...
John, just take a look, it's right up front.
Or you could look across the street, and look if anyone's there, and they're petitioning in that building, and nobody's working on it.
Where?
Across the street with all the paper, the one is vacant.
Yeah, but that always had the petitions in it.
Even when they were offices, they had petitions and petitions and stuff.
So yeah, we should definitely extend that more.
They tore everything out of that building completely, forgot it, and then freed up new ones.
And the, the...
The parkland property, yes. All right, I have a motion to have seconded.
Second.
I'll pay seconds today. Pick one, Carol. Any other discussion? There being no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Should we, should we include some type of square footage in the, in the downtown storefronts? I mean, make it, 'cause there's so many to make an office space and make it, and be wide, and accommodate a business for.
The point is, John, not to get around the law. The point is, in the downtown, not to have apartment dwellers in the front of the building, because that is what, if you read anything about downtowns, that is part of what cripples them. And we have people who are investing money in the spirit of our downtown plan, in the spirit of our law, who have invested money in these buildings. We just had the insurance agency go in on the corner, they converted that building back to a storefront based on the plan that this board passed. How can you possibly then look at a property owner and say, "Well, sorry you spent all your money on that, and you followed the plan, but now we're gonna let this guy put a 10-foot office in front of the building that's still in the downstairs?"
No, I mean, should we, should we work on a plan to make a certain passive storefront or something, so it's, you know, it's a viable storefront?
Why can't it just remain commercial if it was commercial? If it was a storefront, leave it as a storefront. That was the purpose of the moratorium to begin with, because we have storefronts that in the past have been converted to apartments. That's part of the problem in our downtown. I mean, I would recommend putting square footage if the space was commercial and it's designed to be.
Well, I think, John, John, we need to sit down with the code enforcement officer, why not, like, just went on there, and then see what his thinking is on this thing, and if it's, so, allow, maybe we don't wanna do that, John. Maybe we wanna say, this is it, so I think, you know, we don't have to discuss it.
Yeah, right, I mean, there's, maybe you don't wanna put any limitations, though, I'm just saying if there's none, who's gonna interpret what the definition, I guess, maybe who, who are we gonna lead us to interpret if we don't designate certain square footage? Does that make any sense? If, in other words, if there was a use for a property that was in a business sense, and then the back part, a person, what part? How much of it is depending on the business it's used? How many square footage did you need to have that business viable?
And the president's businesses too.
Well, yeah, but, so, we don't, if we don't designate it, then somebody can make, theoretically, we could put an office, a desk in the front, and a chair, and then, you know, both 10 feet, and then make the rest of it apartments, which we don't want.
No, and what I'm saying is, John, we can wait on the side of this tonight, unless sit down with Mike in this case. Okay, next discussion, dog law. We need to do something with this, and John has, they've given us all copies of the New York dangerous dog law that was adopted by the state of New York in 2004, and I would entertain a motion that we adopt this law, because it's a lot stronger than what we got, and also, I would like to see the fines changed to our, on our dog law, what we have in place. Do you know, I think you all have copies, have you read this? Okay. And I think that will suffice for what we have to do, and give us some teeth into this thing.
As a dog law? And that way, they can identify the penalties, they can come off the...
I talked to Mike today, and he said, "No reason why we can't adopt this." So, and I also recommend that we change the fines from $25 to 50, first offense, second offense, 250, and third offense, 1,000. And I know it sounds strong, but when you're going three times, you have no intention of taking care of that problem.
About as stated in the agricultural might, it's quite to be in or sealed by the...
Well, once we adopt this, then it becomes law, part of the law. If nothing else, I'll put it in form of a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
I have a motion made and seconded to adopt the New York State dangerous dog laws and increase their fines. Is there any other discussion, board? If not, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. So you're gonna hold on Mr. Bernane in the morning, my dear.
I will.
Okay. What happened to my agenda? My agenda disappeared on me. Last thing on my agenda is, no, next thing is not on the agenda, but as you're going to worry about a press, press release, we've received monies from the United States government, from Congressman McHugh, the Stark work on our railroad station, a tune of $95,000. In the next few days, it should be approved by the Senate, and that will give us a good start on the roof. We need to hire an engineer. We have to get a set of specifications, federal money, they require that. My recommendations is that we hire Martin LaJudas to put the total package together. If he goes half for the roof, he might as well do the whole thing, and he's, they're gonna be here tomorrow to look at the roof, to measure it, and start determining, also to look at the fire station. 11 years ago, they put the plan together, extend the fire station, and there's $210 million in the federal stimulus package for fire stations. And I'd like to get that plan put together, I got 100 days, get that plan put together and get it submitted, and I'm gonna have that limited at the same time. So, I'll put that in form of a motion.
So I second it?
Move, and seconded, seconded. Is there any discussion?
So the fees for them will be paid from where, George?
Out of the money that we get. We'll probably have to pay it upfront, or we get paid, we send the bills, just like we do with the other grants.
For both the D&amp;H and the fire station?
Yep.
What if we don't get any money for the fire station?
Then, well, guess what? We're gonna be told that.
An engineer...
Yeah, they're gonna be told that, 'cause, you know, I, I don't know, I think our chances are good, because we have a plan already, and it's trouble ready to go, we can, we can now tweak that plan to suit us, but there is a basic schematic plan that they did 11 years ago, at a, just needs to be tweaked, there's some things that have to be changed, and be ready to go. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Last thing is the mayor's conference, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday of last week, John and I attended the conference of mayors in Albany. Yes, sir. It started at 5:00 PM on Sunday with Senator Gillibrands giving an address, and her address basically said she'd go to work from St. New York. But I don't think she has too much to talk about. She did tell our committee she'd been assigned to. And then we had the welcoming by Nikon president, review of Nikon legislative program, the state budget, which was very short and sweet discussion, and then the next morning, there was a roundtable discussion on national grid utility tax reform claims. Does not affect the village at Ross's Point, but does affect national grid, anyway where national grid is, say, like Champlain, where they have power in there. They claim they will pay the, the village on their grocery receipt tax, which is a payback to the villages and towns, so they're going after the money, and they're looking at that, if they win this case, then gas electric is gonna go after it, which still doesn't affect us, because we're in Minnesota back there. But anyway, it's interesting. And I think the highlight of the evening, or today, was the, the two gentlemen, the prospective Bob Dalfor, senior partner, and Eric Moore, associate of Stephen Ginsburg, president of Ginsburg Club Corporation. I think they were great, them two guys. They really did a good job of shooting down the state and everybody else they had, but it was... Then, we had Senator Schubert, and basically, you know, talked about the stimulus package and the money coming to New York State, state comptroller, and then Senator, Senate Majority Leader Malcolm Smith, and they were all coming in different fashion. It was interesting, it was, what's very interesting, that Sheldon Silvers wasn't invited. And bottom line is, folks, the state of New York is being run by the Speaker of the Assembly, Sheldon, Sheldon, but everybody claims the governor has really no power whatsoever. And the big three, the head of the senate, the head of the assembly, and the governor of the state of New York, all come from New York City, so guess where we stand? At the bottom of the total pool. That's it for me. Trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers.
Any other questions?
First item on my agenda is, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Gary Malinsky to attend the New York Rural Water Association, and it's on Monday, May 11th through May 14th. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Seconding.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, trustee Burns. Is there any discussion?
I'll make sure you're mindful of tribal policy.
Yes, yes. I don't think I have too much trouble with Gary.
No, 'cause I see your opening line that the recalcitrant one's right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Second item on my agenda, I'll put this in form of a motion, I'm requesting permission for Ryan Gelinon, Eugene O'Clair, to attend the NYRWA on the one-day seminar in Plattsburgh on basic electricity, and that's on...
March 24th.
Yeah, March 24th.
No second motion?
Moved by Brian Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? If there being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Carol, this one for Tom Reed is not on the agenda.
That's, that's under...
Oh, okay, all right, sorry, got that mixed up. And the last item on my agenda is, I would like permission, put this in form of a motion, to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice to opt a bid for the... to authorize a clerk to publish a legal notice to opt a bid for the relay cabinet for the circuit breaker.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have on my agenda tonight, Mayor Burris.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson, trustee Penfield.
The first item I have tonight is to request an executive session to discuss electric department personnel.
Second. Excuse me. A motion made and seconded, roll call vote to trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burts.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And then I need to request a second executive session to discuss electric department personnel.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Burts. A roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Burts.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, the next item I have is a report of the justice court audit. I met with court clerk on Thursday, the 19th of February, and went through the audit with her. Everything, again, is in very good order, it's extremely well organized, very accurate record-keeping. And again, I think that Tony deserves a pat on the back for her hard work that's in. So for the record, I need to read that the records of Justice LaBouny and Justice Favreau have been reviewed and appear to be satisfactory, and the village clerk has a copy of this for our files, which is required to be done once every year, so. And it's really very, it, it took this year probably about a half an hour, very simple. And Tony has everything laid out and ready to go, and you get there, and it should go very smoothly in the future as well, so, not a problem. Okay, Carol and I dug out the copy of the proposed fees for planning and zoning that we had looked at, I guess it was probably late in the fall. They were run by this board, the planning board, the zoning board, codes officer, and so on, and at this point, we're ready to reduce them to a form where we can actually adopt them. They're the same copy that we had when we looked at them in the fall, and I know that no one has really made any comments of any, I don't know, import, really, that we decided to change. So I would make a motion tonight that we adopt the list of planning and zoning fees that we have published with the proposed changes to those fees.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? Use variance, current 50, opposed 200, is that reduced to 100?
No, we had decided to leave it at 200.
I got, because I had it in my hearing.
We had talked about reducing.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Okay. The only change that we made was the contingency paragraph that we had decided to put in, which is currently in our fee schedule, so that would become part of it, it's just that the dollar values would change, and that is, that in handling an application, if the planning or zoning board or the village board needs to seek assistance from an outside engineer or firm, that the applicant would be notified upfront, that the applicant would be charged back whatever the village needs to recover for the expenses. But that's part of the current fee schedule, and these are just updating the dollar value. Okay? One of the reasons why, George, I think we decided to leave the use variance at 200 is because of the number of items that the applicant needs to establish in order to be granted the use variance, and it really does require on the, on the board's part, whether it's the zoning board or the, or the planning board, quite a bit more research to make sure that that is in fact been done. So it really falls on the applicant to prove certain things, and that's why I, I would say it's certainly favorable to leave it at 200.
By both terms, just with curious, so. I don't have a problem with it. Should we make that a motion, that in form of a motion?
We did. Brian had the exception.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the last item I have tonight is an authorization to travel for Tom Reed, attending the New York Rural Waters Association 30th Annual Technical Conference and Exhibition 2009. This will be held on May 11, 2009, through May 14, 2009, and I'd like to make a motion to allow Tom Reed to attend this conference.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?
They talk, is that yours?
Yeah, they're going, they're going together. Already marked on there, traveling together.
I was looking at them.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have tonight.
Uh, thank you, trustee Penfield, trustee Burts.
I have something to add here.
Well, thank you, trustee Burts.
You're welcome.
And we have two other things on here, I'll open one for trustee Baker, I heard that he had to go to hospital when he gets out.
Okay. What do you have, Carol?
He has him down here for, he's out. From bonus boards, et cetera, can just...
I see they had these from, I was looking there, from the crate center in the city of Blacksburg, are some of these testing that we...
I think that was just, just to give us an idea.
Information?
Yeah, it's $1,500 a day.
We don't rent it out at 500, so I think it's just for information.
Anyway, we have that information, and I'll make a suggestion, see, if nobody has really had time to study all this, can we postpone this to next meeting?
Yeah.
All the stuff that came in from today, they really haven't had time, I don't think we're going to do any of it, but they at least give them time to, to look at it.
Where do you want to draw people, do you want to send them away?
Approve zoning and planning zoning forms, now we've got these a couple months, and everybody's had a chance to go through them, or at least a month. And, or you got any changes? I would like to say that Jerry did a wonderful job of putting these together, she worked very hard. And, and modified and simplified these forms for application.
We should probably pass this thing, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the planning and zoning forms that have been rewritten.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, Carol, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Harson?
Couple things, Melissa and I were emailing, emailing back and forth quite a bit today regarding the new website, so that is on a go, hoping for a date of March 31st to go along with that.
With the...
The new build website.
The new website, okay.
And the other thing is, is we need to schedule another budget meeting for next Monday.
For next Monday?
Anytime you want to do that.
Four hours?
Not good for me.
Is it?
I gotta take my sister-in-law to the doctor's, I'm probably done. Hey, you don't need me there. You get...
More time?
You probably would. Smartie.
Tuesday, maybe? Four o'clock?
Tuesday, all right?
Tuesday's not good for you.
So we either got to do it Monday or Wednesday.
I don't think I got anything.
It's just basically to go over what's in the budget, I mean, the budget has to be out, the tenant's budget has to be out by March 12.
Yeah.
It's huge decisions.
Why don't you do it Monday? On back, on back. I mean, she's got an early one.
Four o'clock, Monday?
I don't know.
It's convenient for Kelly.
Monday's fine, Monday's fine for me.
It's good for me, too.
Yep.
Okay, Monday affords.
All right. I'll mark it down just in case.
In my calendar.
Okay, anything else, Harson?
Can you guarantee it won't snow next month?
I will tell you this, there's a 50% chance it won't.
You're right. Really, or it won't, you're right.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Open the meeting, that's my way this time, anybody wish for support, we do so. If not, I'll take motion for recess.
Motion for recess.
Penfield and Burts, at 20, at 42.
Well, we didn't go anywhere last week.
I'm sorry.
Last meeting.
Yeah. She's gone with Mike Pedro.